Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand, we'll have our invocation and our pledge.
That's exciting.
Tonight, I do want everybody to keep Italian Chief Tim McClung in your thoughts as a member of our fire department. Down for a little bit, but well on his way back. And other than that, we'll just take a moment so that you may do what you want with this item. Thank you. Do you want me to pledge?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Gillen, the role, please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward 1, here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonspire, Ward 3. Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Pruitt, Ward 6.
Thank you, Shannon. We're short on business. This is the council meeting minutes from our January 17 meeting. You all have had these long advances tonight. Chair will entertain any amendments, corrections, additions, or motions.
Didn't see any corrections or additions. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
That's our approval unanimously. We have an appointment with the Downtown Development Authority. This is for her.
Mr. Mayor, Council. Lynn Quick's term with the Downtown Development Authority expires in just a couple weeks, on February 18th. She has decided, after many years of great service, not to seek reappointment. And the board would like to request Andy Bowen, who is the owner of Kahuna Fishing, to take her place. And if appointed, his term would expire February 18th, 2017.
Any questions for Chair on this item? There are not a motion to be in order.
Mayor, I'd like to say a thank you to Lynn Quick. She's been a very active member of the DDA Board. And then, yes, a thank you to her. Make a motion to approve, Mr. Bowen.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Grove?
Yes, this next item is a reappointment. I was going to stand till you to the Ethics Committee. You're good.
Any questions or discussion? If not, motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Ethics renewal.
Yeah, this is a resolution to re-certify the city's ethics. I have made this a motion. Chair, as we set the jam, I had reviewed, uh, the take-up to your re-certifying. It includes the old ordinance about the 1999, which more or less outlined the ethics for council and the court of issues. And also sets up the Ethics Committee, which got a pass to support your re-certifying.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Ethics renewal.
Yeah, this is a resolution to re-certify the city's ethics. I have made this a motion. Chair, as we set the jam, I had reviewed, uh, the take-up to your re-certifying. It includes the old ordinance about the 1999, which more or less outlined the ethics for council and the court of issues. And also sets up the Ethics Committee, which got a pass to support your re-certifying.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Any motion to approve?
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. I've got a couple first reading ordinances. How many of you will play the first one?
Yes, Sir Mayor. In August of 2012, the council approved an amendment to the alcohol ordinance regarding the required identification. Um, how one section, uh, the section for the contact person was overlooked in that ordinance. This is a housekeeping measure, just to standardize the identification requirements for all the alcohol applications.
Any questions? Ms. Gillen, give us one. Once again, first reading will make itself upon consideration. Under the four minutes, first read, related to the traffic order regarding pockets. Mr. Grove?
Thanks, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, behalf of the authorities, we question the city created no parking zone on both sides of Puckett Street, between Tennessee Street and Stonewall Street. Uh, they have created some off-street parking and then just remodeled these units. Uh, it really cleans up the area to, uh, make this into parking. Other works recommended, Grove.
Questions by the other side? Thank you, sir. Next one.
I'll take a deep breath on this one. Uh, we have an amendment to Streets and Sidewalk Orders regarding sign retro-reflectivity methods and procedures. Uh, Federal Highway Administration has passed a rule that all responsible agencies adopt a method and procedure for a sign maintenance program. They can regularly address new signs, minimal retro-reflectivity requirements, begin implementation before January 2014. Um, the retro-reflectivity is actually how much light a sign, or how much light a sign bounces off at night. It has to do with the new sheeting goods and materials that you're, that they're now requiring. Uh, there are like six different methods that, uh, the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices recommend. The visual nighttime inspection method is the cheapest of the six. Uh, this ordinance change recommends that particular method. Uh, it's not my first choice, but it's the cheapest. We are in the process right now of upgrading the sign program anyway. So, I don't know that it's going to cost us a lot of money to do this. So, we recommend approval. Per freedy.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions by the other side? This is the ordinance, especially.
Mayor, question. Uh, Bobby, every municipality has to do this, and we are already doing it.
Yes. Everything we're, we're changing out right now, uh, all the signs we're using now are created with the new roll goods that the Federal Highway Administration has recommended. Of course, we got a lot of signs in this town.
All right. Bobby, please move on with the next step of the change order. Once they drive.
All right. Once they drive, box culvert was approved on October 4th, 2012, with a low bid price of eighty-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. Uh, C.H. Kirkpatrick and Sons was the contractor. The project is now finished. Uh, field conditions dictated an additional seven thousand eighty-eight dollars and eight cents of field changes, and twenty-four thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents of emergency labor expense, uh, on getting the water, water systems, new valves cut in where they can get the water isolated to put the culvert in. Uh, final, total price of the project was one hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars and forty cents. The change order amounts thirty-one thousand seven fifty-seven seventy-seven. Uh, we have stormwater funds available to cover this change order, and, uh, we recommend approval.
Any discussion on this item?
Uh, one thing, uh, just, I guess, to praise the, uh, the contractor and public works, uh, I'm including his name right now, uh, the guardian, the term, uh, Dale. He pulled, he pulled me aside the other day at Rotary and said that, how thankful he was and how blind everybody was working there. He said, not only the city group, but the contractors. So, thank you for that. Very good.
I'll back that up with a motion.
Oh, we had a motion to approve.
Second. I don't want to steer you in any one direction or other. All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Continue on. Mr. Elliott?
Okay. We, recently, we had an engine go out in our 2007 Street Sweeper. You know, if you're not familiar with the Street Sweeper that we use, you have a, an engine that pulls the truck around, and you have an engine that operates the sweeper on the back. Uh, we, uh, lost the engine in our earlier model sweeper, same type sweeper, same manufacturer. Um, the engine costs, and all the purchases that went with it, cost us fifteen thousand eight hundred nine dollars and seventy-five cents. We use Taylor Truck and Equipment, or Taylor Truck Transport, their shop, to do the work. Uh, we, uh, funding for this expense comes from vehicle maintenance budget, stormwater. We have funds available. We recommend approval.
Any questions, and if not a motion, is in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on.
Okay. We had, recently, we had, back in December, I guess, we had some, uh, repair work done that, that exceeded the threshold of five thousand dollars on our 2008 model commercial garbage truck. We had a new steering box, uh, pins and bushings put in front end, and, uh, holding the radiator repaired. Total six thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. We also had, uh, Taylor Truck and Equipment do this work because they're the only shop close to us that can do the front end work for this, um, axle on this truck. Funding comes from vehicle, vehicle maintenance line out of solid waste operations budget, and we recommend.
Any questions on this item? And if there are none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion, second. All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on.
Okay. We had, recently, we had, back in December, I guess, we had some, uh, repair work done that, that exceeded the threshold of five thousand dollars on our 2008 model commercial garbage truck. We had a new steering box, uh, pins and bushings put in front end, and, uh, holding the radiator repaired. Total six thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. We also had, uh, Taylor Truck and Equipment do this work because they're the only shop close to us that can do the front end work for this, um, axle on this truck. Funding comes from vehicle, vehicle maintenance line out of solid waste operations budget, and we recommend.
Any questions on this item? And if there are none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion, second. All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on.
Item is added. We're talking about the garbage truck replacement item that was handed to us.
Mr. Elliott?
Mayor, I'll be brief. Um, or a lot briefer than I was before. This, uh, same expense that we did, that you just approved, the six thousand and change on repair work, we've had numerous headaches with this, with this truck. It's the 2008 model. Uh, it was slated to be replaced this current budget year. We had, uh, a series of three residential trucks go down the week before Thanksgiving that necessitated us to postpone that purchase and buy a residential demo truck. Um, we have thought every way that we could, we could possibly think of to find a way to get rid of this chassis and keep our body on this 2008 because our body is in good shape. Uh, we finally got Mack, or Next Tran, who is the Mack dealership, talk to us about the possibility of doing a deal with us on maybe taking the, our old unit in on trade, and we keep our old body, and they refurb it and put it on a new chassis. And quite frankly, I didn't believe they could make it happen, but they, they gave us an offer that, uh, to say they did some concessions would be an understatement, in my opinion. Uh, they've offered us, uh, to take our body off, refurb it, repaint it, take our 2008 model cab chassis in on trade on a 2014 Mack model, same specs, with a five-year extended warranty on the engine, wiring harness, and the, uh, tier-three emissions system for, and you've got the quote, I, I came up here, didn't bring my quote with me, one hundred twelve thousand and change. Um, we think it's a deal that's, um, well, it's half, half the price of a new truck.
You made it.
And...
You borrowed the sermon.
We took bids back in October when we were going to replace the commercial truck, and it just so happens that Next Tran put a bid in with the same body that we've got, it's two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. And we've had our body checked, and it needs some work, uh, but it's certainly in excellent shape to be refurbished and reused. Uh, time is of the essence of this. Uh, we, you know, it seems like it always is when, you know, we've got one truck available, we've got one chassis available. If you take it in today, well, you know, uh, that's not necessarily the case. I mean, we can, we can postpone this purchase if approved, uh, but it's going to be July if we wait for the next round. Um, this truck that we have is, is eating our lunch every day. I mean, it's just, you know, the, as, as my memo says, the bleeding's got to stop somewhere. Um, we were slated to buy a residential truck next fiscal year anyway. We ended up having to buy it this year. So, we got these two together, and we're not slated to replace anything else for another couple of years. Um, we think it's a, a deal that's, uh, well, we think it's a great deal if we can make it happen. And, and I've been assured, I've, I've been in two or three sessions with Mr. Reinhardt, our finance director, and going through the lease pool. Uh, I know it's not budgeted for this year, but we have funds available to make it happen if we can do that. And we certainly need to replace this unit.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Elliott on this item?
Mayor, I've got one. Um, Bobby, in, in your memo, and I don't think we discussed this during the work session, you said the average age of a solid waste fleet is nine point five years.
That's our fleet, yes, ma'am.
Our fleet. But it shouldn't be any more than seven.
No.
Is that industry, uh, step, me?
Well, actually, it's part industry, part me. Uh, we, we've postponed some purchases over the last four, five years with our economy the way it is. We've tried to stretch as far as we can, and, you know, we were eight months short with the residential truck. It went down, like I said, you know, um, but, uh, we've, we've got, uh, we've got some older stuff that, that we'd like to change out, but we understand.
And so, we're getting this for, if, if we vote on this tonight, um, 112 instead of 224.
Two twenty-four, yes, ma'am.
If we vote to July.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay.
112 now versus a brand-new truck, body, chassis, everything included.
In, in July?
No, not necessarily in July, but if we were, if we were going to bid this thing out turnkey like we, like I just bid out last October, thinking we were going to buy this truck, or a new truck, in this current budget year, which we were slated to do, um, a brand-new truck, turnkey, new body, new cab chassis, new everything's two hundred twenty-four thousand. But since we're using our body, they're refurb-ing it.
Twenty-fourteen?
Yes.
Mack unit?
Yes.
And how much of, um, they will give us a, a one-year guarantee, or?
No. It comes with a standard one-year warranty and five additional years.
Okay. So, what, so primarily, the opportunity to get this chassis is now. Otherwise, in the next budgeted year, they may not have the chassis to replace it.
They will, but ours won't, our trade-in value won't be as much because we're going to be using it from now till then. Uh, if it's...
If it keeps running.
If it keeps running.
Yeah.
Uh, plus, we're going to spend a boatload more money between now and then on getting it repaired, so, um...
We've gotten to that point.
I mean, Tom Reinhardt asked me, I guess I shouldn't say this, but he asked me, what are you going to do with your old chassis if, if you can ever, you know, get a new truck? And I said, well, probably take it out to sell and roll it on the scales and see what they'll give me for it. I mean, I have been, I have been very perturbed with, with this whole thing.
Question, Stephen, party, Russell?
Yeah.
All right. Well, there are any discussions, questions? The Chair will entertain a motion.
Well, Bobby, it sounds to me like you really did a lot of negotiations to get, to get this figure and, um...
I, I didn't do, I, I just simply told the guys, they asked me point-blank, if we can get our hearts and our pencil right, could you get this approved on an emergency basis? And I looked at him, and I said, depends on what your pencil says.
But that's, that's what I can't...
And, and I, I was thinking they were going to come in a hundred and thirty thousand.
Okay.
They came in without the warranty. It was like a hundred and nine. That's, that's conceding a bunch.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
And, and that total amount, Mayor, is a hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-six cents.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll say it.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
You didn't offer them to buy a new truck, yes?
Uh, and then you have, uh, one other item, Mr. Elliott, about commercial dumpsters.
Yes, sir. We, we have, uh, we buy dumpsters every year to either supply to new customers or to replace rusted, worn-out, uh, ten-year, greater-than-ten-year-old boxes. We took three bids, uh, on a total of, uh, well, let's see, there's twelve two-yard boxes, sixteen four-yard boxes, and eight eight-yard boxes. We took three bids. Uh, New Life Environmental was, was the low bid at nineteen thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. We have twenty thousand dollars budgeted. These prices include freight, so we recommend the low bid, New Life Environmental, for nineteen thousand three seventy-three sixty-eight. We have budgets, uh, budgeted dollars, and E-Verify and Save are in hand.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Senator Bobby, Mayor, do you have the next, I have three out there. I think we got lots of questions there.
Yes, ma'am. The first, uh, item there is the material order for the Highland 75 Industrial Park project. Uh, realize that this is an estimate. Uh, it is a pretty close estimate, and this is a budgeted item to, uh, run, uh, power to Highland 75.
That's updated based on what you have, uh...
Yes, sir. I'm asking you to just, I basically approve the project based on the revised list that was passed out during work session.
Just a couple of questions in regards to the changes. I, uh, I noticed that the boring went up drastically, uh, in between. What, what was the reason for that?
The, the original estimate was way under. Um, we, we've actually used, uh, a comparative estimate with what it's costing us to bore the interstate at Main Street currently. Um, that price is a lot higher than our original estimate. Oh, and I do, that particular item of the engineer, he actually told me this this afternoon, he did assume some rock in that. There, you know, there's a rock adder if they bore and they encounter rock. I don't think there's a lot in there, but he, he, uh, put in like ten percent rock, just in case.
Now, on that, and just, you know, I don't want to put the gas department on, you know, at a place, but do they have any equipment that can help us with that? Or is, is that something that they wouldn't be able to help out with?
Well, they are in the process of getting a, a boring rig, but, uh, at this point, to do an interstate bore, you've got to be DOT qualified. Um, and there's a lot of, uh, restrictions. Uh, we have to have somebody that's already done this before, or this, but we, we certainly do plan to, to utilize that in other projects in the future.
We've had a discussion before. They've talked about cases that check out to see if you're setting those. Correct. Okay. Any other questions? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on, please.
Uh, the next item is, uh, parking lot lighting for a new customer. Uh, and this is not a bid item because it is a customer con, customer contribution item, and the total for the lighting for that customer was six thousand thirty-nine and some change. Ask your approval so that we can get that for that customer.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next one, David, please.
The third item, this is a cable order. Uh, this is standard underground cable that we use daily on various jobs. We keep a, uh, a certain stock amount on the yard, and that is getting low and needs to be replenished. This cable is already on our, uh, master bid list that we have with the other cities in the state, so it is, it has already been competitively bid.
Thank you. Are there no questions? A motion is in order.
Make a motion to buy cable for the electric department at forty-nine two.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Chief Carter?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll bring before you tonight a repair for one of our fire apparatuses, the oldest one in our fleet, approximately twelve-year-old fire truck. Uh, basically, we've lost power in the drivetrain. We felt initially that it was a transfer case that was bad. Uh, repair the transfer case was four thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars fifty-two cents. Turns out, though, it's going to take a full-power train repair, uh, with a complete rebuild on the transmission, a replacement with the rebuilt transmission. Repairs are totaling at this point ten thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. We're asking for amount up to and not to exceed for a total repair of eleven thousand dollars for this. All E-Verify and Save documents are on hand. Repair will be done by Ten Eight Fire Apparatus, uh, who is our Pierce vendor.
Okay. Any questions for Chief on this item? And if not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Molnax, you have the next several.
Mayor, Council. First item is for the purchase of an on-road tractor truck used by the water pollution control plant for hauling bio solids. Bids were received from three different vendors for the trucks with the equivalent hauling capacity. Murphy Hoffman Company submitted the low bid, the amount of one hundred thirteen thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars. This is a budgeted item, and it is replacing a truck that was originally purchased in nineteen ninety, and is no longer deemed roadworthy.
Questions on this item? And if not, motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Molnax, you have the next several.
Mayor, Council. First item is for the purchase of an on-road tractor truck used by the water pollution control plant for hauling bio solids. Bids were received from three different vendors for the trucks with the equivalent hauling capacity. Murphy Hoffman Company submitted the low bid, the amount of one hundred thirteen thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars. This is a budgeted item, and it is replacing a truck that was originally purchased in nineteen ninety, and is no longer deemed roadworthy.
Questions on this item? And if not, motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on.
Next item's for remodeling of the conference room at the water treatment plant. This work involves replacement of acoustic ceiling tiles and quarry tile flooring repair, door replacements. Bids were received from three different contractors. Graham Commercial Contractors submitted the low bid in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. We have the E-Verify and Save documentation in hand, and we recommend approval.
Any questions for Ed on this item? Not? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on.
Next item's for purchase of materials used in the first phase of the Tennessee Street water main replacement project. We received prices on these materials from four different vendors. HD Supply submitted the low bid, the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. We have the E-Verify and Save documentation in hand. This will be paid for, uh, with a combination of bond funds and, uh, contribution by Walgreens in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. We recommend approval.
Any questions? If not, motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on, please.
The next item is, uh, parking lot lighting for a new customer. Uh, and this is not a bid item because it is a customer con, customer contribution item, and the total for the lighting for that customer was six thousand thirty-nine and some change. Ask your approval so that we can get that for that customer.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next one, David, please.
The third item, this is a cable order. Uh, this is standard underground cable that we use daily on various jobs. We keep a, uh, a certain stock amount on the yard, and that is getting low and needs to be replenished. This cable is already on our, uh, master bid list that we have with the other cities in the state, so it is, it has already been competitively bid.
Thank you. Are there no questions? A motion is in order.
Make a motion to buy cable for the electric department at forty-nine two.
All favor to Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We've had our body checked and it needs some work. But it's certainly in excellent shape to be refurbished and reused. Time is of the essence of this. We, you know, it seems like it always is when, you know, we've got one truck available. We've got one chassis available. If you take it in today, well, you know, that's not necessarily the case. I mean, we can postpone this purchase if approved. But it's going to be July if we wait for the next round. This truck that we have is eating our lunch every day. I mean, it's just, you know, as my memo says, the bleeding's got to stop somewhere. We were slated to buy a residential truck next fiscal year anyway. We ended up having to buy it this year. So we got these two together and we're not slated to replace anything else for another couple of years. We think it's a deal that's, well, we think it's a great deal if we can make it happen. And I've been assured, I've been in two or three sessions with Mr. Reinhardt, our finance director, and going through the lease pool. I know it's not budgeted for this year, but we have funds available to make it happen if we can do that. And we certainly need to replace this unit.
Any questions for Mr. Elliott on this item?
Mayor, I've got one. Bobby, in your memo, and I don't think we discussed this during the work session, he said the average age of a solid waste fleet is 9.5 years.
That's our fleet, yes, ma'am.
Our fleet. But it shouldn't be any more than seven.
No.
Is that industry stat?
Well, actually, it's part of industry, part me. We've postponed some purchases over the last four or five years with our economy the way it is. We've tried to stretch as far as we can and, you know, we were eight months short with the residential truck. It went down, like I said, you know. But we've got some older stuff that we'd like to change out, but we understand.
And so we're getting this for, if we vote on this tonight, 112 instead of 224.
224, yes, ma'am.
We vote to July.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay.
112 now versus a brand-new truck, body, chassis, everything included.
In July?
No, not necessarily in July. But if we were going to bid this thing out turnkey like I just bid out last October, thinking we were going to buy this truck, or a new truck, in this current budget year, which we were slated to do, a brand-new truck, turnkey, new body, new cab, chassis, new everything is $224,000. But since we're using our body, they're refurbishing it.
2014.
Yes.
Back unit.
Yes.
And how much of, they will give us a one-year guarantee or?
No, it comes with a standard one-year warranty and five additional years.
So primarily, the opportunity to get this chassis is now. Otherwise, in the next budgeted year, they may not have the chassis to replace it.
They will, but ours won't, our trade-in value won't be as much because we're going to be using it from now till then. If it's...
If it keeps running.
If it keeps running.
Yeah.
Plus, we're going to spend a boatload more money between now and then on getting it repaired, so.
We've gotten to that point.
I mean, Tom Reinhardt asked me, I guess I shouldn't say this, but he asked me, what are you going to do with your old chassis if you can ever, you know, get a new truck? And I said, well, probably take it out to sales and roll it on the scales and see what they'll give me for it. I mean, I have been, I have been very perturbed with this whole thing. Yeah.
All right, well, if there are any discussions, the chair will entertain a motion.
Well, Bobby, it sounds to me like you really did a lot of negotiations to get this figure and...
I didn't do, I just simply told the guys, they asked me point-blank, if we can get our hearts and our pencil right, could you get this approved on an emergency basis? And I looked at him and I said, depends on what your pencil says.
But that's what I can't agree with.
And I was thinking they were going to come in $130,000.
Okay.
They came in without the warranty. It was like $109,000. That's conceding a bunch.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
And that total amount, Mayor, is $112,856.26.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll say it.
All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
You didn't offer them to buy a new truck, yes.
And then you have one other item, Mr. Elliott, about commercial dumpsters.
Yes, sir. We have, we buy dumpsters every year to either supply to new customers or to replace rusted, worn-out, 10-year, greater-than-10-year-old boxes. We took three bids on a total of, well, let's see, there's 12 two-yard boxes, 16 four-yard boxes, and eight eight-yard boxes. We took three bids. New Life Environmental was the low bid at $19,373.68. We have $20,000 budgeted. These prices include freight, so we recommend the low bid, New Life Environmental, for $19,373.68. We have budgets, budgeted dollars, and e-verify and save are in hand.
What's the count of your motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Senator Bobby, try your next, I'm sorry, I believe. We have last question.
Yes, ma'am. The first item there is the material order for the Highland 75 industrial park project. Realize that this is an estimate. It is a pretty close estimate, and this is a budgeted item to run power to Highland 75.
That's updated based on what you have.
Yes, sir. I'm asking you to just basically approve the project based on the revised list that was passed out during the work session.
Just a couple of questions in regards to the changes. I noticed that the boring went up drastically in between. What was the reason for that?
The original estimate was way under. We've actually used a comparative estimate with what it's costing us to bore the interstate at Main Street currently. That price is a lot higher than our original estimate. Oh, and that particular item of the engineer, he actually told me this this afternoon, he did assume some rock in that, you know, there's a rock adder if they bore and they encounter rock. I don't think there's a lot in there, but he put in like 10% rock just in case.
Now, on that, just, you know, I want to put the gas department on, you know, at a place, but do they have any equipment that can help us with that? Or is that something that they wouldn't be able to help out with?
Well, they are in the process of getting a boring rig, but at this point, to do an interstate board, you've got to be DOT qualified. And there's a lot of restrictions. We have to have somebody that's already done this before or this, but we certainly do plan to utilize that in other projects in the future.
We've been in discussions where they've talked about cases, the check has to see if you're setting those.
Correct. Any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Aye. All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is parking lot lighting for a new customer. And this is not a bid item because it is a customer contribution item, and the total for the lighting for that customer was $6,039. It's a change. Ask your approval so that we can get that for that customer.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next one, David, please.
The third item, this is a cable order. This is standard underground cable that we use daily on various jobs. We keep a certain stock amount on the yard end that is getting low and needs to be replenished. This cable is already on our master bid list that we have with the other cities in the state, so it is, it has already been competitively.
Thank you. If there are no questions, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to buy cable for the electric department at 49.2.
All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Chief Carter.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I bring before you tonight a repair for one of our fire apparatus, the oldest one in our fleet, approximately 12-year-old fire truck. Basically, we've lost power in the drive train. We felt initially that it was a transfer case that was bad. Repair the transfer case was $4,547.52. Turns out, though, it's going to take a full power train repair with a complete rebuild on the transmission, a replacement with the rebuilt transmission. Repairs are totaling at this point $10,213.98. We're asking for amount up to and not to exceed for a total repair of $11,000 for this. All e-verify and save documents are on hand. Repair will be done by 10-8 Fire Apparatus, who is our Pierce vendor.
Any questions for chief on this item? If not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Jan Anderson, thank you. Mr. Monax, you have the next several.
Mayor, Council. First item is for the purchase of an on-road tractor truck used by the water pollution control plant for hauling bio solids. Bids were received from three different vendors for the trucks with equivalent hauling capacity. Murphy Hoffman Company submitted a low bid, the amount of $113,389. This is a budgeted item, and it is replacing a truck that was originally purchased in 1990 and is no longer deemed roadworthy.
Questions on this item? If not, motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on.
Next item's for remodeling of the conference room at the water treatment plant. This work involves replacement of acoustic ceiling tiles and quarry tile flooring repair, door replacements. Bids were received from three different contractors. Graham Commercial Contractors submitted a low bid in the amount of $11,951. We have the e-verify and save documentation in hand, and we recommend approval.
Any questions for Ed on this item? Not? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Next item.
Next item's for purchase of materials used in the first phase of the Tennessee Street water main replacement project. We received prices on these materials from four different vendors. HD Supply submitted the low bid, the amount of $13,699.99. We have the e-verify and save documentation in hand. This will be paid for with a combination of bond funds and contribution by Walgreens in an amount of $25,000. We recommend approval.
Any questions? Not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is for construction of sewer taps on an existing sewer line behind building number two at West Side Village. An owner recently purchased the building and negotiated with us to construct the taps. When we got ready to construct these, we found the sewer line is too deep to safely work on it. We're going to relocate a section of the line. We took bids on this work. Hill City Onsite submitted a bid of $7,720, and that includes installing a manhole, relaying the line at a shallower depth, and constructing the sewer taps and connecting them. We have the e-verify and save documentation in hand, and we recommend approval.
Any discussion, questions? Not, motions in order?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Last one for you, Ed.
The next and final item on the water side is the proposal for engineering services at the U.S. Highway 41-411 interchange. We have a 36-inch water main there that's going to require relocation as part of the DOT's restructuring of that intersection. We've been working with the folks at Jacobs on this now for about six months. They've looked at ways of trying to avoid the relocation, but it looks like we're going to have to bite the bullet. Jacobs, formerly JJ&amp;G, were the original designers of this 36-inch water line. They're also the engineer that's designing the interchange remodel. They submitted us a proposal in the amount of $65,100. That includes design, permitting, and contract administration. We have the e-verify and save documentation in hand. This was not a budgeted item, but we do feel we have the funds on hand. Well, we pretty much have to go ahead and do the engineering on the line, and hopefully the construction of the relocation will be on next year's budget.
Any questions for Ed on this item? If not, motion will be in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Jan Anderson, thank you. Ed, you have the next item. Actually, if you would note, there is an item on your agenda, if you have the paper agenda, in relation to software maintenance, that has been removed from tonight's agenda. We'll take that up at a later date.
This is the second year of two-year agreement with Black Forest Act. They do emergency and non-emergency call-out services for us. It's an amount of $14,486, and it's recommended for your...
Any comments on that?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Quist, you got the next three, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First of the three that I'd like to bring to you tonight, so I'm sure you're all well aware, every two years historically, we have put out a statistically valid and reliable citizen survey. We send out 1,200 surveys community-wide, gauging citizen perceptions regarding the quality of life, the perceptions of quality of city services, and things of that nature. Additionally, we have polled citizens on various policy issues that I believe have been very useful to the city as an organization, as well as the elected officials. For instance, we used it to poll support for the recycling program. We've used it to poll support for SPOST, Sunday alcohol sales, and things of that nature. Again, we do this every two years historically, and if we wish to continue, this would be two years since our last one. The price of the service is $10,300. It's from the National Research Center, which have provided us great services in the past. It also provides us with comparison results so we can see how our survey responses stack up to those around the country and in the southeast. I think it's a great, great service. And this is a budgeted item. We have the save and e-verify documents in hand, and your approval is recommended.
Questions for Tom on this item? If there are none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
And I will take a brief moment to just say to folks out there listening, or watching, or reading about this, if you get the survey, please fill. We really appreciate people filling it out, and we'll try to promote it more as the time years for those to come out in the next couple of months. Thank you for that. The second item is just simply an acknowledgement that the contract between the city and GFA for our 2010 Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block grant has come to a close. Again, we received that grant in 2010, and we completed it last summer in June. They're simply ending the contract, and they require acknowledgement that we've received that, and it requires the mayor's signature, so bringing it here for you tonight, your approval is recommended.
Question. Item 24 on page 88. Did they correct this Honorable Matthew Cantini?
You know, good catch. No, they did not, but they actually fired that employee, I'm pretty sure.
They fired that employee?
Yeah. No, it's actually correct on the actual acknowledgement form, but as a sad note, that employee is no longer there, but they had a pretty big reduction in course.
Thank Mr. Lovell for pointing that out.
No, Jack's got that on his own, actually.
If everybody else thinks I lied, that's not the worst thing I've ever caused.
Can't.
So if we can, can you get a motion to get this...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, gathered myself. The final item, this is in regards to the 2009 CDBG Disaster Recovery Supplemental Grant. We've been partnering with Habitat to build several owner-occupied affordable homes in the North Town area. Glad to say that this should be the final two homes. In fact, it was supposed to be the final one home, but we've been able to stretch the dollars a little bit further to get one additional house. So what we're doing is the city in December purchased two properties that the intent was to then transfer to Habitat for their ownership. So at this time, now that we've met all the requirements for transferring property, we're asking for you to go ahead and convey the property to them, and simultaneously, we'll be issuing them two construction loans so that they can build these houses. The first construction loan is for $75,000, and that will cover the entire cost of constructing one home. The second loan is for $15,000, and that will supplement funding that we were fortunate to receive from United Way and Anheuser-Busch, who put in a big chunk of money to build this additional house and really helped us to get that additional seventh house. So with your approval, I'm seeking your approval to transfer the ownership of the property to Habitat and issue the two construction loans. All this funding is coming from the grant, so there's no direct cost to the city.
Okay, any other questions for Tom on this item? And if there are none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. What you have before you have two, I guess, three easements. The first easement is when we acquired an easement from Walnut Grove Plantation before we were given approval from Georgia DOT. So the first one is the city conveying back an easement that Walnut Grove donated to us. And then the second two easements are Walnut Grove Plantation donating those easements back to the city. All this is for a DOT grant, the Walnut Grove Leak Mounds Trail, and I recommend your approval on these. I might add that Ms. Ann Cummings from Walnut Grove Plantation was very helpful in donating this property, and I would like to thank her.
Thank you. Very good point.
Although she did not want me to thank her, but...
It's true, she did not. Well, then, never mind. We'll make a note that we're not supposed to mention her. Chair will entertain a motion.
Second.
All in favor, Nacate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else needs to come forward, Council this evening?
Yes, sir.
Stepford, if you would, please, your name and address for our clerk, please.
I'm Steve Wade, 17 Grove Way, Cartersville, former 16-year employee. Tomorrow being one month, I contacted Human Resources, talked to Judy Jones, and I asked for an estimated retirement that I would draw out at May 31st, which I'll be 55. I contacted each week, gave my email address. Each week I would ask, you know, when would I get it? Well, today, after I got back in town, I talked to, each week I would talk to a lady named Cheryl, real nice lady. And I talked to her today, and she said that Dwight had sent off for something, but all I was asking was for an estimate. And I asked her this morning, I said, when does the council meet? And she said, let me look at my schedule. She said, they meet today. I said, that's fine. And I said, does the work session still meet at 6:00? And I said, okay, I'd like to meet with the work council. So I made a call into Mr. Step, who was out of the office. So around 2:00, I called Elaine and asked her, I said, can the public speak during the work session? She said, they usually don't, because I was wanting to get on the agenda to keep from having to come to this, because I didn't want to bring it to this and air it out in public. Because all I was wanting was an estimate, because I needed to start planning for my money to come in, since I've been out of work 13 months. And Elaine called me back at 4:00. She said Dwight is real good at estimating it, since he had sent off for it and it hadn't got back yet for a really firm what I'd get, since I get penalized every five years, you know, till I get 65, which I knew that. Well, she said I would get an email by, you know, this afternoon. Well, I waited till 6:30, and I still checked my email, haven't got anything. So I left the house at 6:30 to come here. And I just, I think I was wrong in this. A month is too long for me not to get any information on this. And I would just, I would just like to bring this before the council, and I know somebody can do something about this. And I mean, all I want's an estimate.
He sent it to you this afternoon. I don't know what the matter of truth is with your email, but I've got it in my email box. I don't know why I didn't get yours.
Well, I didn't get it.
Your email address is swayed1958@aal.com.
Yes, sir. I never did get it. I looked at my spam and everything.
So there's an email that has been sent?
Yep.
Can we print it out?
I don't know.
Why don't you check it tonight?
I will.
Make sure that if there was some kind of glitch, obviously you were copied on it.
Yep.
And if you don't, then I can send it again in the morning.
Okay. Thanks for your time. Y'all have a great evening.
Yes, sir. Anything else needs to come forward, Council this evening? I will just quickly say, keep those folks in adrift with all your thoughts, and thank you to our city folks who, once we got the all-clear, did what we could for those people up there. I know I've gotten several compliments from those in that community and around the county about your willingness to step up in the time of need, and that's greatly appreciated, making us all look good, as you always do, so thank you. Yes, sir.
Recently, we had three homes out of a section here that had Millview. Remember those on the...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that something that the entire city can entertain if it happens to their residents?
No, that was related to the fact that they had been flooded, and they were in a flood area.
Okay.
And we had to actually redo Hazard Mitigation Plan, declare that as part of it, receive grant funding to do that. And we had to work with those property owners the whole time, basically not promise them anything until unless we got the grant, and we got it. We got it for two, didn't we?
We got it for three, but unfortunately, one of them...
Foreclosed on.
Yes.
But the short answer to your question is, no, that's not available to everybody, and the reason that we were able to do that is we got the federal funding to finance the majority of it.
When I was asked that at the break, I guess I left it for that.
Yeah. If you would have those people, they could contact Mr. Quist, and he can probably look to see if there's a possibility that their property could be, that that program could be available for their property or not.
But that was... Do you remember when we got so much rain that the top of the hobby lobby fell in? Remember all that rain?
Mm-hmm.
It was related to that event. And there was mold in the house, because there was a bunch of stuff that fell down over it, and there was water in it and everything else that were flooded.
Listen, I had a lady who had been renting from him for several years, and he was advised by the authority, I don't know what authority, Dr. somebody, that he couldn't come back in because, you know...
Oh, it's true. It's bad.
But he remembered, that's going over there.
Yeah.
Okay. I've seen your mess.
Okay.
Anything else? Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.